A hundred thousand dollar parsonage in Bryant is different than a hundred thousand dollar parsonage in Sioux Falls. And why should they be completely exempt? I know at one point, we had one small church with seventy members that had three parsonages worth a million and a half dollars cumulatively. Now, is that right? Is that the way it should be? Don't the fire departments go there? Don't the police respond? In any case, I think that some of these little things like that should be on our list, and maybe we just pass them on to a legislator without being, bringing in the whole South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. But as the year goes through, we need to make note of these little things and bring them forward at the next legislative session.
I received the email from your commissioner on the first one, on the disabled and elderly tax reasons. I want, I'm totally in agreement on that. That's something we could take. And as the state's second vice president, I will bring that onto the agenda. If you want to send me more information on the other one, please do.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, I did not send that to the whole group of commissioners.
Okay, well, and it's appropriate. Thank you. Alrighty. Moving on, we are going to, we have a first reading and authorization, authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on July twentieth, twenty twenty-one for the adoption of an ordinance prohibiting the consumption or smoking of cannabis in public places. Mr. Boge, good morning, sir.
Eric Boge, State Attorney's Office. Per the direction received from the board at a previous meeting, I have drafted this in conformance with those directions. This will prevent or prohibit the consumption and smoking of marijuana, medical or otherwise, in a public place. That is also defined in this draft ordinance. Certainly willing to answer any questions that you folks may have. This is a draft, in some respects, honed and polished from what some other counties in South Dakota have also adopted. But it's, it is some change. There's an English major in myself that can't help myself when I start to polish it, so.
Alrighty, so this is to set the reading date, or the second hearing date, which is where we'll do public testimony for July twentieth. Comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Bart. Eric, so what would be the penalty if you were smoking? I believe I saw a group of ten individuals smoking a joint on the corner of Tenth and Cliff on my way to work today.
Well, in the draft ordinance, it is set as a class-two misdemeanor. So, as any other class-two misdemeanor, that range is capped, both on monetary and jail terms. But oftentimes is something far less than that imposed by the court.
And a class-two has to be witnessed by a law enforcement officer, correct?
Generally, unless they receive a report, and the report comes in, and law enforcement usually follows up on that, and then also observes the activity themselves as well, so.
Yep. Other comments, questions? So, we want to set the hearing date for July twentieth. We will take public comment on that date.
It's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. We will have that discussion on July twentieth. Thank you. Briefing and commission discussion on medical marijuana ordinance. So, this is a commission discussion on the same subject. If we want to, I know our group, Commissioner Benega and Heiburger, who is not here today, had a meeting last week, week before.
Correct.
And maybe if you want to lead the discussion, if you know of anything that occurred at that meeting that we should be aware of.
Unfortunately, I was out of the town, and so I wasn't able to attend. When I put the schedule together, I had one day that I couldn't make it. That's the day they chose. So maybe that was some hint on what they wanted for public input from me. But anyway, the conversations that I've read and about, and had some input from other people, is tomorrow, we're meeting again at eight-thirty, I believe, and we're looking for questions and input on all the issues that were discussed and discussed in the previous conversation. So, right now, it's still listening sessions and bringing together all the affected, I'd say, city and county ordinances and resolutions that need to be addressed so that everybody's on the same page. So we have, frankly, an opportunity to listen to everybody in the next two public hearings. I think, I can't remember exactly what time it starts tomorrow. I should double-check that.
And I know that the discussions ranged from licensing fees, which probably varied from
Yes.
five thousand dollars, twelve into six figures, to, I mean, that's, that just gives you an idea of the range of topics, to, you know, how many licenses. Stuff like the cultivation, can you grow plants in your backyard, in your house, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, I don't know if there's anything that, as a commission body, we want to give to Commissioners Heiburger, Benega, about, you know, what our thoughts or considerations are. I think, Commissioner Bender?
Well, I mean, I think that we're still in the getting, gathering information stage. But personally, I mean, I don't think that, as a county, we have any real expertise in this area. And I don't really think that it's an area that we need to be involved in any more than we're required to by statute. I think that if every municipality is going to have a dispensary, I don't see a reason that we need more than one dispensary in the county. I think there'll be lots of dispensaries available at that point. And I don't personally see that we have any expertise. We don't get any extra funding for doing any of this. So I don't see why we would get involved at all in testing manufacturing cultivation. I just don't see that that's an area where we really would add a lot of value.
Commissioner Bart.
Commissioner Bender is so good at this stuff, and she's right. I don't think we need to overdo this. One of the things that I would note is that at the, at the meeting that, that did happen, that law enforcement was well represented, but neither hospital was represented. The medical community wasn't there. If we're talking medical, why don't we have medical people come? And I think going forward, maybe they could be invited. The other thing I wanted to say is that whatever products are sold under the name of medical marijuana, I think, need to be tested. You know, the, with the wild market, you don't know what you're getting from some street vendor. It could be ditch weed sprayed with something, whatever. The advantage of, like, tobacco these days is you know your tar and nicotine number. And whether it's a Winston or a Salem, you know, it's right there on the pack. And we can be sure that no other adulterated stuff has been put on it. And I think that's something, you know, testing has got to be an important part of, of using this stuff.
And I think a lot of these things will be governed by the South Dakota Department of Health. They are promulgating a lot of rules, even a point system as to how licenses will be distributed. It's kind of up to us to decide how many we want. So, it's an ongoing discussion, and I think most of us are kind of observing more than anything, just for that purpose. See where it goes. And maybe less is more. So, alrighty. Any other comments?
Just confirm that the meeting is tomorrow at eight-thirty at the downtown library.
Okay, thank you. It's open to the public. Alrighty. Moving on, we have a briefing on highway revised provisional budget submittal and requests. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. And as a correction, I guess this isn't really a quest, this is more the request to have the discussion to revise the budget. So maybe it's more appropriately titled, Proposed Budget Revisions Discussion. So, on May tenth, we submitted our provisional, or our budget, our twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six long wage plan, in accordance with the directions given. You guys hear me okay? Okay. So, talking with auditors, we're kind of in a better position than we thought we were going to be going into the year in terms of our budget. The projected end of year fund balance, as it stands right now, for twenty-twenty-two, with the older budget previously submitted, is around six million dollars. That's a kind of a healthy number to be not spending in terms of putting our taxpayers' money to use. And so I proposed to spend about one-point-five million dollars additional money from the six million dollars that would be available. The agenda outlines where those items would be spent, primarily in Section B of the submittal, which is equipment, and Section E of capital improvements, which is the five-year plan. So each of those is outlined in the memo, and I'll cover them briefly. Section B, oh, by the way, our operations manager Hank, fleet manager Fred, and our project manager engineering supervisor Jacob is next door. So if you guys have questions, I'm going to bring those guys in to answer them. So they are on notice. Anyway, Section B is equipment. In twenty-twenty-two, there is a loader, a front-end loader. It's our equipment number twenty-five oh four, to be replaced at the tune of a hundred-seventy-six thousand dollars. And there's a track skid loader that will replace, two numbers you see there, the twenty-five thirteen, and I might have these numbers backwards, but one of them is a cat skid loader that we lost in a flood in two thousand eighteen. And we did get sixty-two thousand dollars from our insurance, put back into the highway fund for that. We never did take action and replace that. The second one is a little skid steer Mustang, which is a wheel tire loader, not this track skid steer loader. And it's, it's kind of unsafe to operate. It's difficult to go down and ditches safely because it's tippy. People don't like to use it because the controls are touchy. And so it's also, I believe, a two thousand and ten unit. And so anyway, that's the proposal there in twenty-twenty-two. And just to be complete, even though it doesn't affect the twenty-twenty-two budget, there is a fleet vehicle oh-two oh eight, which is a black Jeep, and that would be replaced in two thousand and twenty-three. Should I go on or take any questions on fleet?
Questions on the vehicles?
I just, I just would point out that I did have an opportunity to meet with the whole crew this morning, including Steve, our new highway superintendent, to go over these. I want to just give a public thank you to Shannon and his crew that had to put together a budget after our former highway superintendent resigned. And they did a really great job. And they have done a great job managing their budget to build their fund balance back up. And revenues are trending ahead of where they were projected, and they've kept their expenses down. And so we've met with the auditors department, and both auditor Ben Kite, Kim Adamson are comfortable with the presentation and the proposal here. And so, you know, I'm generally going to be supportive of all these things. But we did have a pretty detailed discussion and go through every single one of these things this morning. And, and Hank, and Shannon, and Jacob, and Fred have answers to any questions you guys might have about any of this, items that we're discussing this morning.
I don't have a question about the equipment or any of those issues currently, but didn't we at one point establish a reserve fund that we thought would be the minimum need for cash reserves a couple, three years ago with a policy conversation? And I don't remember the percentage.
I would be hearing this secondhand, and if I remember this correctly, it was twenty-five percent of total revenues. Our revenues are about fourteen million dollars.
Right.
And twenty-five percent of that is three-point-five million dollars.
I just want to confirm that number, because I frankly don't remember all the details of that conversation. I just know that we had that policy discussion, and I think it would be important for us to make sure that we're following our own policies.
Commissioner Bender?
So, speaking to that issue, the last page of my memo, there's a, there's a little note on that. And with the proposed changes in our budget, the end of twenty-twenty-two year fund balance with these revisions ends up being fourteen-point-six million dollars, which is thirty-three percent of annual revenues?
Right, I got that. I just want to make sure that the number of percentage is twenty-five or thirty or thirty-five. What, I don't remember what the percentage is.
To be honest with you, sir, I do not know that exact number either.
Commissioner Bender?
I would say that we did have that discussion this morning, when the auditor was president, and Kim Adamson, and they both agreed that twenty-five percent. I don't think there's an actual written policy that that ever was formalized, and an actual written policy, but they were both very comfortable with that twenty-five percent of protected revenues.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead.
No, as long as they're comfortable with it, I'm fine. I just want to make sure that we don't have something different than what's been proposed.
Mr. Chairman?
Bart?
Shannon, the public don't all know where highway funding comes from. It's not coming from your house. It's coming from
That's a very good point, Mr. Bart.
You have your own funding source.
This is the, the only county in the state that is a hundred percent funded away from property tax. So all those wheel taxes, license plate fees, et cetera, that's what funds the highway and bridge fund, our entire program. No property tax, no general fund money.
Great point. Alrighty.
Well, thank you for your kind words earlier. That's a team effort, by the way. So Hank, Fred, and Jacob all get to share that.
Highest praise I've ever heard her give.
Just to be complete, I will go through Section E very briefly at a high level. In twenty-twenty-two, there's some additional projects to work on. Highway one-thirty utilities and right-of-way, which is a corridor study going on between the interstate and the highway one-thirty-seven. A guardrail repair job that frankly has been a shelf job, but we couldn't afford in the past. But now, now with this additional influx, we're going to move that forward. And then a new bridge that our bridge inspector just found recently, that's on our county highway system. So there's design in twenty-twenty-two and construction in twenty-twenty-three. And just to finish up, some additional revenues into our micro-surfacing program, which is an existing line item, we're just bolstering that amount by a hundred thousand dollars. And so that, that total of, for twenty-twenty-two impacts of capital is one-point-zero-seven-eight million dollars. I could go on if I need to. Otherwise, I will stand by for questions or close.
So this is a, basically, so much of our budget is done outside of highway because you guys are responsible for your numbers. So this is just a change that we'll be seeing in our budget process when we adopt, I guess would be the proper way to say it, so.
Yeah, I think I view this as a proposal to, you know, alter what we discussed when we had all of our budget hearings, to account for the new information about where our fund balance was. And then it would, you know, unless there's any objections here, it would show up when we approve the provisional budget.
Heads up. Alrighty. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Staying up there, Shannon, we have an amendment to MC twenty-one oh two, highway one-thirty corridor study.
Correct. Just a small correction. It is project number twenty-one oh one, and it is for the highway corridor study, which was funded partially through the MPO. We got a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. And our portion of that is eighteen-point-oh-five percent, which is about thirteen-point-five million dollars. This amendment is only changing its completion date. We've had a challenge scheduling meetings to have our final study advisory team meeting, to bring this to a final report stage, and then be presented to the MPO and to this body. And so again, this is a no-dollar change order, or excuse me, amendment to an existing contract to extend the completion date to August thirty-first. And the consultant is SEH, Short Elliot Hendrickson.
So this is a briefing, no action required?
Informational. It's, it's been approved informally, following proper protocols.
Okay, no need because of, yep, falls within the scope. Alrighty. Moving on to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign MC twenty-one dash fourteen, South Dakota Department of Transportation for Railroad Crossing Improvements.
Thank you again, commissioners. So, every couple of years, or every maybe year, we get a couple of projects from the DOT that request additional participation for railroad crossing improvements. This presented before you is two locations. The first one is on two-hundred-forty-eighth Street, which is our county highway one-ten, at mile marker nineteen-point-eight, which is located just two miles north of Baltic, and it is the DNI railroad crossing. So the improvements there would be basically just new signals and equipment. And the total cost from the DOT, in conjunction with the railroad, is about a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Our share is ten percent, so roughly thirteen thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. The second location is on highway one-twenty-two, which is two-hundred-and-fifty-fourth Street, at our mile marker nineteen-point-nine, which is located four miles south of Baltic, also on the DNI. And at that location, the improvements would include a canal levered gatearms and additional flashing signals to the tune of about two-hundred thousand dollars. Again, our ten percent match equals nineteen thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. And with your approval, those contracts can be executed and returned to the DOT.
Questions for Shannon?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Indulge me for one quick question. Why does one get arms and the other one just signal?
That's a good question. It's partly because of history of traffic accidents, and also just pure ADT. And that location has a little bit more of both.
Okay.
That's why it gets the higher level of safety protection.
Alrighty. Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just want to ask Shannon, so while we have these expenses, what about the railroad crossing itself? Doesn't the railroad, you know, replace the ties and?
This is correct. Those locations have already been upgraded in previous years with the new concrete panels. And so this is just, again, the railroad kind of taking ownership of their locations. And, you know, step one was getting the panels improved, the riding surface. And then they continue to do improvements. And so they're increasing safety by adding these features.
When I was young, the railroad crossings were incredible. Six miles an hour would break your axle.
Yeah, you know, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years ago, the in vogue thing to do is put rubberized railroad crossings, and they were great the first two years they were installed. And then they quickly degraded. So the concrete omni panels kind of thing now is the way to go.
Excellent. Okay. Moving on to Jacob Morris. Is Jacob here?
Yes, he's right.
Alright.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Briefing on change order for project MC eighteen oh seven, highway one-ten culvert replacement. Good morning, sir.
Morning, commissioners. The briefing for the eighteen oh seven, one-ten culvert replacement, this is just moving the completion date from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. There are, there are no other changes with it due to budget issues. Last year, we weren't able to complete it. So we moved it to this year.
Since it's impossible to now to complete it in twenty-twenty, I think we should approve this.
This is a non-action item. So what's being changed is the chain, is the completion date?
Yes.
Okay, so you're just informing us of the completion, us and, of course, the citizens of the completion date. Alrighty. Moving on, authorized twenty-twenty-one raise grant application for Maple Street and Park Street construction. That is an expensive project.
Did we skip sixteen?
I'm sorry?
I think we skipped item sixteen, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jacob's on here twice. Okay. So, micro-surfacing and crack seal for MC twenty-one oh two. Okay?
So this is our micro-surfacing job for this year. Due to budget issues last year, we weren't able to complete as much crack seal as we, as we wanted to. The crack sealing is really what makes that asphalt surface impervious to water, prevents a lot of the freeze-thaw action we get in our roads, and keeps bumps to a minimum. So we're asking to use some of the, the funding from the underbid. When we bid chip and micro this year, those bids came in lower than expected. So we would just like to use some of that funding back into this project to complete some additional crack sealing.
I think that this makes a lot of sense. We, in Minnehaha County, are really blessed to have a really good highway system. And that's because we are diligent through the leadership of our highway department in doing this micro-surfacing and crack sealing. It keeps our system in good shape and ultimately saves a lot of money for taxpayers because it's the reconstruction that is really pricey. So I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. You did a good job, even though I got you out of order. Sorry about that, Jacob.
That's all right.
And now we're moving on to the raise grant application for the Maple Street and Park Street construction.
So you've heard about this one a couple of times. Maple Park Street, very large project, around fifteen million dollars is what the estimate is right now. And this is a joint effort between the City of Brandon, the city of Sioux Falls, and Minnehaha County. Minnehaha County is taking ownership of the largest portion of this project. So that's why we are the ones submitting for this grant. There is no cost participation on our side for this grant. It's a hundred percent funded, federally funded, if we were to be awarded the grant. So just asking for permission, a motion to proceed with the grant application process.
Questions for Jacob on this?
We need that money. I make a motion to approve.
I'd second that.
Motion and a second. There's no chance a railroad could pay for any of this, is there? Inside joke, sorry. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And we are skipping nineteen because that was taken off our agenda. And moving on to twenty. Morning, Jamie. We have looking for authorization for the chair to sign a contract with Tri-State Nursing for nursing services at the JDC.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Detention Center. I'm before you today to ask you to enter into a new contract with Tri-State Nursing. They haven't raised their rates since twenty-eighteen, even though we've only been with them since twenty-twenty. But they're increasing their rates by sixteen percent. I planned for an increase in the budget, and I think we're going to be about spot-on, pretty close. But it is a bigger increase than what I expected. I'd ask for you guys to authorize this contract, please.
Move for approval?
Second.
Is this an annual contract, or?
There isn't usually an end date to it. It's just when they change their rates, or there's something significant that they want to change in the contract. They told us that the, the main reason this time is because of the increase in rates. So they haven't changed them since twenty-eighteen. They're, it's across the board with all their clients, the same amount, so.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jamie. Jason, we got drought conditions, unless it rains today. We'll probably still have a drought.
Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. And the answer is yes. We're still in a severe drought. We did get some rain last night, and it's expected to get some more rain throughout the week. I know the fire departments were busy over the fourth weekend, putting out ditch fires, I assume, due to fireworks. So we're back again today to see if it's time to authorize a burn ban again. In the discussion we had a couple weeks ago, we were going to kind of see what happened and wait until the sixth and maybe impose that. So that's why I'm here today. And I also, Robert, Robert Dykstra from Brandon, fire chief, is here. If you've got any questions for him.
Jason, do we have any idea, I'm sorry, please, do we have any idea how many calls that the rural fire department had this week?
I tried to get some stats this morning, but I never got a return email. But I, I know they were busy. There was, I talked to, well, I talked to Robert here, and he thought they had about twenty. But Craig Olson, he's also volunteer fireman for Crooks, and he said the radio traffic was pretty heavy. They were driving around the sections, you know, waiting for calls. And I know Renner was fairly busy, too. So I'm assuming it was due to fireworks.
Commissioner Bender?
I think that I'm in favor of, you know, I hesitate to do burn bans. But I just think that, you know, even though parts of Minnehaha County got more appreciable rain than other parts yesterday, I didn't get hardly anything at my house. It is, with the high temperatures that we've had, and the little bit of rain, I, I think that it's into interest of the citizens of Minnehaha County to have a burn ban at this time. Even the little bit of rain that we've got in the forecast, I don't see that it really appreciably is going to affect the, the dryness of the area, unfortunately for the farmers.
Well, I'm going to agree with the commissioner, because it sounded like, when I heard a little bit of the information that was on the radios, that there were lots of people very, very busy. And I think that puts together a significant load when they don't really need to have that concern to deal with.
You know, we don't get a lot of, you know, usually in the spring and the fall, I get a lot of calls for, hey, is there a burn ban? You know, I want to burn my brush pile or ditches. I haven't got a lot of those. They're coming in very, you know, sporadic. So I don't see a lot of people doing that. But I, I do agree that it's probably time to put a burn ban on, because, you know, we were right at that point where the weather service might have been going from a might have been going from a severe drought to an extreme drought. You know, this may be helped the situation, but it's not going to take us out of that, out of the drought, the severe drought mode as of yet.
Is there an end date on this resolution?
I think one of the last times we did it, somebody made a motion to allow the chair to end it, so we didn't have to.
In effect, the way it's written right now, until removed by a future resolution.
Okay.
I think that the, pardon me, Mr. Chairman, I think that your decision along in consultation with the emergency management and the fire chiefs is enough. I don't think, you know, if Noah's building an ark, we don't need to wait a week. We need to untake it off. At the same time, I would ask Chief Dykstra for a question or two.
Morning, sir.
Good morning. Robert Dykstra, Fire Chief of Brandon Volunteer Fire Department. I'm also the president of the Minnehaw County Fire Chiefs Association.
So Chief, was your unit busy over the last week or two with grass fires?
We had three fires specifically on the 4th, yes. I don't have the hard numbers from the other departments, just going off what I heard on the radio. I'm up to 27 calls just over the 3rd, 4th, and 5th.
You know, it's been suggested previously that we just should rely on people to use their common sense, but, you know, people are not that smart.
As a wise person once told me, if it was common sense, everybody would have it.
So, this is a little bit away, but when I drive around the county, I see some very large piles of timber that have been taken down. What's the story on them? And are they going to burn? Are they going to rot or?
It's on their private property. A lot of the time, those individuals will call the local fire department and advise them of when they're going to burn it. Sometimes, depending upon the department and the resident and the timing, departments can use those for a training scenario when the conditions allow. But otherwise, it's, as long as there's no, nothing prohibiting them, they'll burn it when they see fit.
Raccoons and skunks have to live somewhere.
Yes.
I would go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution with the amendment that it shall continue in force until removed by the Chair of the County Commission in conjunction with, in consultation with the Emergency Management Director and the Fire Chiefs.
I believe that's how we've always done it in the past, I believe.
We have a motion and a second. My input on it would be, just based on the comments that you two gentlemen have made, people call and say, can I do this? Well, if you have to ask, you probably shouldn't be making the call. And just by having the authority of this resolution saying, no, you can't do it, may prevent a tragedy or a lot of money being spent and resources being consumed that don't need to be consumed. So I also am in favor of it. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. We have a burn ban.
Thank you very much. Just one note on that. One thing we've always heard in the past is, can we get the word out as soon as possible, advertise it somehow? I know I'll send a text or a message out to all the volunteer fire departments, and they usually put it on their Facebook page, their social media, and things like that. But that's one thing, if we can, so.
We have Calo right here.
Perfect. So that's usually the one concern we hear from the resident. I didn't know there was one, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Alrighty. Moving on, we look for a motion to approve a consume and blend alcohol beverage license application from Musno Chief for an event. I know I butchered that one. For an event on July 10th. So it's, must be a wedding? Yep, a wedding. So looking for permission to serve alcohol.
Move for approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, authorized change order process for construction projects. Carol?
Good morning, Commissioner Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a resolution requesting you to allow the Commission Administrative Officer, which would be myself, to approve change orders for use of owner's contingency for any individual dollar not to exceed $25,000 for the construction of the Minnehaw County Highway Facility. That starts the 1st of September, and the remodel of the extension, which has already started, and then administrative building, which will fall into place after extension is done. There are times when decision needs to be made rather quickly. We also know that we don't ever want to lose vendors because we're waiting for a decision, so this allows for a quicker action to go through and help. In perspective, the jail was $100,000 for change orders. This is a much lower, smaller project, much lower number to go through and do. And I would stress that there are what we call OAC meetings that occur every other week, which are owners, architects, and contractors. And some of you have been sitting through them for a long period of time with the jail and have started up now with new projects. And we're always on top of things, discussing things at that point. And would note that our owner's rep has to sign off on anything first.
Alrighty.
Commissioner Karski?
Commissioner Bender?
Let me just say that I'm in favor of this process. That is the process that we used with the jail. I have a lot of confidence in Carol. She's very detailed, but she doesn't approve change orders until they've already been vetted by at least two commissioners who are sitting in that OAC committee that Carol referenced. And there just are too many times in a construction process, so you have to make a decision relatively quickly. And this allows us to do that with guardrails up, where she doesn't have the authority to do it for a large change order. And I think we have a history of always keeping the commission pretty informed of change orders as they come through. They're not necessarily what you would like to see in a process, but they are reality. It happens in every process. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Consider a motion to declare equipment for the Minnehaw County Information Technology Department as surplus for disposal. It's a very small list. Monty was here earlier. Does anybody have questions that we need to bring up to Monty on this disposal?
Mr. Chair, maybe they should go to the museum.
Some of these things could be there, yes. A dot matrix printer? Yeah, bought 20 years ago, so, okay. Anything to add, Monty? Okay. Looking for a motion then.
So moved.
Oh, Carol, does this need five commissioners because it's disposal?
No, only if it's donated.[1053.33]
Only if it's donated, thank you. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chairperson to sign a contract with Barry Dunn for review of prosecution software. Welcome again.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is a proposal from Barry Dunn for a comparison analysis of prosecution software. Currently, the State's Attorney's Office utilizes a Minnehaw County application. The purpose of the comparison analysis is to review the current application and a program called PPK, which stands for Prosecutor by Carpel. Barry Dunn's Justice and Public Safety Practice has background in integrative justice technologies and most recently worked with the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County on the implementation of ZERKER, which is the public safety technology for 911 and the jail operations. Barry Dunn is also familiar to you as they provided the review, selection, and implementation of the ERP Tyler technology software that we refer to as Munis and Incode. The cost of the prosecution system's comparison analysis is $25,000. That does not include travel expenses and that will obviously depend upon how many times they come in. We certainly have moved to doing a lot more things without being in the same place at the same time. So that would, it's probably going to be much less than it was two years ago. The cost of that trip is $1,244 per person per trip. Prosecution technology is an integral part of a public safety system. The review step is critical to have the opportunity to review pros and cons, recognizing that technology is not just a financial investment, but also an investment in staff efficiency and the future. The two people who have been working closest on this are Daniel Hager from the State's Attorney and Monty Wannabach from Director of IT. And I know they've been working closest on that contract and can answer any questions better than I can.
Commissioner Bender.
Sorry, I've been a little chatty today, but I would say that I have, I've been in several meetings where we've talked about this and, you know, and I've also experienced IT conversions in my own legal practice. And there are just, I think with any, any type of IT can be your biggest friend, but it's what you don't know that really can be detrimental to you. And so I want to commend Monty. He did a good job in negotiating this contract down. It started at $50,000 and so the cost is a little bit shocking, I think. But I think that it's a, it would be a large expenditure if we moved to PPK and it would affect not just the State's Attorney's Office, but our whole countywide systems. And so I think it's really important that we get outside experts to come in. Barry Dunn has a whole division that deals with these kinds of systems that affect law enforcement, particularly with attorneys and governmental entities. And so I think it will be a really good use of county funds to get an outside expert to come in and evaluate these two different systems who undoubtedly, we know are not identical. But we want to make sure that we understand when we make a, come forward with a recommendation that we've thoroughly vetted it out and understand what we're gaining or what we're losing by making a choice. So I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Banda.
I'm in favor of it also. I just, excuse me, I just have one item of concern, I guess, and it's, the agreement talks about a 90-day window of time or three months. We have to have our budget completed by September 30th and we usually have to have that done a few weeks before that to make that September 30th deadline. It would be nice to have those results before that time to decide how our budget will be affected for 2022. So I would encourage Barry Dunn and the team to try to move that date up a little bit if possible because it would be appropriate for us to have that information before we finalize our annual budget.
And I think what we did on our budget is we set a quarter million aside as a placeholder in IT versus directly to that. But I agree, it would be nice to move that ball forward and also, you know, having an outside consultant removes maybe the bias and the emotion from the process because we are talking about spending a lot of money and some significant changes that will impact multiple departments. So I think it is a good, a good idea, so. The quicker the better, though. This does give them 90 days to do that and report back.
Yeah, I mean, we will certainly try to encourage them, I would think. I mean, I know that they're trying to do a lot of this remotely, so that might be able, that might allow us to speed that up, but that was their request for the amount of time that they needed. I want to thank the State's Attorney's Office because they did a really good job of turning around this contract because we've been trying to explore our options and come up with a solution here. And so I know that the State's Attorney's Office has been very helpful in trying to expedite it so that we can keep this moving along as quickly as possible.
I'd make a motion to authorize Chairman Karski to sign the contract with Barry Dunn for review of prosecution software.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Alrighty. Liaison reports. Who would like to liaison first?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think Bill Hoskins may be in the other room, but I asked him to come in and give a brief report on development or two at the museum. And here he is.
Morning, Bill.
Morning.
Good developments, I would hope.
Otherwise.
Well, yeah, yeah. For the first time in over a year, a monthly attendance has exceeded pre-COVID levels, which is exciting for us. We've had a rough time the last year in terms of attendance, but things are going well. Rental, if you look at different areas, rental attendance in '21 was double of that of last year. Outreach programming's really been the area that really has gotten hit hardest. We often do a large number of programs in and with the schools and we've received notice that we'll be back, able to go back into the schools in the fall, so that should really help things. So I think we're turning the corner. On the other hand, there's a lot going on at the museum. The Siouxland Heritage Museum's Alliance, which is a 501(c)(3) private nonprofit friends group, is doing a number of fundraisers here in July. We have the Pork Raffle.
You guys have bought tickets, right?
Tickets are $2. I can give.
Stick around.
Give them to you guys if you're interested. We also have the Historic Homes Tour on July 20th. The tickets are $10 at the Pettigrew. There are four historic homes in the district that are opening up to allow this program. And we also had a large donation from a private individual to the Alliance on Friday to help upgrade some of the storage furniture at the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center.
So a large donation. Go ahead and expound on that.
A check for $40,000.
That'll help.
So that's great and the Alliance, over the last couple of years since we opened that facility, has probably raised $100,000 that we've used for shelving upgrades. So those are not happening through taxpayer dollars, but along the side. And there are other fundraising efforts, although Pork Raffle doesn't bring in a lot of money. It does bring in money and that goes to help support also other programming such as the concert series, Friday Noon Concert Series. They're a big sponsor of.
Good news. All good news. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Other liaison reports. Commissioner Banda.
I have a couple. In the middle of June, I had a two-hour, three-hour conversation by virtual training, I guess, for the Juvenile Justice Committee and I'll pass out the report because it's way too long to discuss. But during COVID, it was interesting to see that some of the numbers actually went down. So there was less activity in the juvenile justice area of the state than maybe is normal, which is a good thing. And then I was notified this morning, the fair board had received some information that we did have wind damage last night on some areas of the fair grounds, but the fair board will continue to operate the fair on August 5th through the 14th. It's going to be the 82nd, I think, fair and they're excited about the whole process and the number of entertainment venues that they're able to support. So that's awesome. Alrighty.
I'll just give a quick update. Commissioner Barth and I attended one of these OAC meetings last week and the work, Carol mentioned it briefly, but work has started over in the extension building, that remodeling work has started now. And so it's good to see that going and hopefully we'll stay on schedule with that so that we can move equalization over and make room here to start on the construction. But the admin building, we still have some final decisions to make before we finalize that plan.
My most noted, notable activity was I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, Greater Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting. Numerous discussions, discussion items, most significant in my mind or relevant to us would be the number of jobs being created just with recent job announcements. 4,500 jobs created. Of course, that 4,500 doesn't consider how many ancillary jobs are created because when you create 4,500 jobs, you need more bankers, more insurance agents, more doctors and nurses and restaurants and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of discussion about talent attraction and what 4,500 jobs does mean to our community, so. Ongoing discussion, obviously. You can't watch the news or open the paper without seeing something about that, so it'll be interesting to see where it goes. Any new business? Any old business? No executive session today, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. See you on the 20th if not sooner.